Hi, folks, we're live here at the beautiful Curtis Mansion in Miami Springs. I'm here with Jackie Bravo, who's running for Miami Springs City Council Group Two. And we're here in The Grove, just in front of the beautiful Curtis Mansion. Hi Jackie, how are you?
I'm good, how about yourself?
Great, great. One, thank you for participating with this, I know, and thank you for running, right? It takes a lot of energy, a lot of commitment to run for City Council, run for public office. And so I want to say thank you for throwing your hat into the race and your commitment to the city of Miami Springs. So we appreciate that.
Well, thank you for having me and giving me your time as well.
You know, let's, as, we're trying to give the audience and the Miami Springs community a kind of insight into all the candidates. And we've interviewed Vincent Medel, we've interviewed Victor Vasquez, and now we're interviewing Jackie Bravo. So Jackie, tell us a little bit about your background and your history here in Miami Springs.
Okay, well, I was raised here since the age of two. My grandpa, I lived with my grandpa since the age of two, together with my mom. I've been here ever since. I went to local schools, I went to Springville Elementary, I went to Miami Springs Middle. And then I went off to St. Brendan High. I've, I'm absolutely in love with my city, I feel like it's home. I currently have my own home now, we've been homeowners since 2008. And I don't know, what else do you want me to tell you? I'm a little bit-
So, 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 so you grew up here, you went to the local schools, and then, did you go to college?
Yes, I went to Nova Southeastern University, where I obtained my Bachelor's of Business Administration with a minor in social psychology and a minor in education. I'm a former Florida educator.
Okay.
I'm a local licensed-
We got a little breeze, folks, so bear with us.
It's a little bit windy here. But it's one of the most beautiful spots here, it's secret, and that's why I chose it. Um, I got side jobs.
Well, we're talking about your career, so you were a teacher, it sounds like, at one point?
Right, I was a teacher, a former educator here in Florida. Um, and I just, I, I love the small hometown feel. I grew up in a sense of community where everybody felt that they were supporting each other, people would say hi to each other. Um, I don't know, it's like, you know when you're gonna leave Miami Springs to go to an event? And then, right when you hit Curtis, or you hit South, and you're coming in, you feel like, oh, I'm home.
Yes.
And it's, it's like that sense of relief.
I've always said that stress level of the day starts to go down. Once you make the right turn, you get off Thirty-Sixth Street and start going into the city streets, it's like, the stress of the day starts to kind of wind down as you go into the calm of it, between the trees and the homes and the quiet streets of Miami Springs.
No, and also, it's kind of like, now, sitting here in this chair and growing up here in the city, I, I, I give myself a wow factor, because I, I knew, I mean, when I got married and we first bought our home, I couldn't believe that I was still driving and passing the same streets and the same schools. And I'm already a grown woman with children. And then, now, sitting here to run for council, it's, I would have never thought. And I think it's just maybe part of the puzzle that I need to compete as, you know, being proud of my city.
So, I made pause here for a little bit, because we've got a little bit of background, airport noises, you know, one of the things that when you're closer to Thirty-Sixth Street. Uh, but, and that's why, what helps with these mics, definitely with the background noise.
Can they hear me okay?
Yeah, the folks, if, if you're online, we have people watching right now. Um, comment on, in terms of the audio, if you can hear the audio okay, let us know what you think. And of course, please add any questions that you have, and we'll try to get to as many as possible. We've got a limited time here, we're trying to squeeze while we've got lighting here before the sun goes down. Alright, so, you know, you had a choice, right? When, when, you know, you, you've got your career going, and you're gonna go buy your, your house. And you could, you know, buy anywhere in Miami, and you chose to buy in Miami Springs. So explain to me, what drove you says, no, this is, I want to be back here at home?
I just had so many nice experiences growing up as a child, and I knew this is something that I wanted for my family. Um, initially, when I met my husband, and we were just having talks of getting married, and things were getting real, and I said, we're gonna move to Miami Springs. And he said, um, well, I don't know. So he wanted to be more by his area, because he went to La Salle, and he's, you know, by The Grove.
Right.
And I said, well, that's a condition. And then it worked out, and then now we're here. And I just, I really have a passion for my city. I think, um, it's, it could be, um, it's beautiful now, and like any city, it can always be better.
Right.
And I just want to be a part of that. I'm also a member of the local Miami Springs Women's Club.
Right.
I joined two years ago. And I think with the help of, of knowing this wonderful group of women, it's motivated me to be a, a better woman.
Okay.
So, that's kind of where I am now.
Well, as, as you know, we're gonna have our first, uh, uh, woman mayor, Maria Mitchell will be the first female mayor of the city of Miami Springs once the next term begins. And if, and it looks like for sure there'll be a, a second woman on council, yourself, or, or your opponent. Um, so, you know, you convince your husband, and he says, okay, yeah, we're gonna move to Miami Springs. So tell, tell the audience, you know, obviously, I've, I've known you for, for, for some time, but, you know, tell the audience what you do for a living.
Um, I'm a real estate broker. I've been doing this for the last, I would say, geez, ten years.
Okay.
And, um, that's basically it, I'm a full-time mom as well.
And how many kids?
I have two girls. Bella, which is twelve, and Bianca's nine.
Wow. So a twelve-year-old, a nine-year-old, and, and they're in middle school, no?
My oldest is in middle, and my youngest is still in elementary.
Alright, alright.
And, um, they kind of, uh, at first, they were a little bit adamant about me running, because it was taking that little piece of time that I had for them.
Right.
Um, which it really hasn't taken much time, because I think that when something's very important to you, um, just like anything in life, you manage your time, and then you just prioritize your time. And, you know, they, they like what I'm doing, they're supporting me, and it's showing them that they can do many things. You know, while they even have a full-time job or a full-running family, there's always time for community. And one of the biggest things here is that I want to teach them to give back. Give a self, uh, show them a self, a sense of, um, not being selfish, just, you know, I don't know, trying to like, give back to your community in a way. And they see that I'm so busy, but I'm still making that time, because it's, it's, it's important to me, so. It's been a family effort.
Uh, so, you know, we, we, we've gone through your career, background, grew up here, convinced the husband, hey, I want to move here, raising your kids, you've got two kids, nine and, nine and twelve.
Nine and twelve.
Nine and twelve. And, so you've got this hectic life, and you decided, you know what, I'm gonna go run for council. And you said, part of the inspiration came from the Women's Club, part of the inspiration, your own children, trying to show them what they can do. What else inspired you to run for council?
Also, um, my line of business, I'm always helping out my clients. And they're, for the most part, ninety percent looking for their forever homes.
Right.
So I want to make sure whatever impact, um, I get to them, it's gonna be positive. I'm just a very customer service person. I like to serve, whether it be the public, whether it be my family, whether it be your friends. I'm always trying to maybe make things better for them.
Sure.
Not necessarily caring so much about my feelings, which maybe is a little bit of an issue, but I get a sense of gratification when I feel that I'm doing better for others.
Excellent. If, let's say you, you know, in, in the, the election is, on, what, April sixth, right? Is, is Election Day, and early voting is not this Saturday, I'm sorry, not this Friday and Saturday, but the following Friday and Saturday. So it's actually, um, Good Friday and-
That's correct.
And the day before Easter is early voting at City Hall. And then, Election Day on Tuesday, April sixth, will be at the Country Club.
Correct.
Now, um, you have an opponent who's running against you. If you end up winning and becoming the, the councilwoman for Group Two, what are some of your top priorities?
Well, one of my top priorities is, um, public safety. One of the reasons I came back to Miami Springs was because I felt safe.
Right.
I always felt safe, um, the police were staple in our community, they were well-respected.
Right.
And they had a presence.
Right.
I'm not, um, we have that presence now, but I just think that, again, our, our population, our diversity has changed. A lot of other developments have happened around here. And, um, so we've, I think we've been feeling a little bit of the ramifications that come with that.
Right.
Um, so, public safety is one of my main concerns, um, that I would like to look into.
Right.
I know that a lot of residences, I mean, I've been walking to over eight hundred homes already, so I have a big perspective of what their concerns are. And I can tell you that top is public safety. Um, everybody wants to feel safe where they live.
Right.
Um, I know that there's an issue going off of Thirty-Sixth Street.
Yeah.
Okay, which obviously needs to be addressed. I was looking over the ordinance, which is, um, user charge for use of excess police services, which is chapter one eighteen of the, of the code.
Right.
There's a lot of great verbiage, but a lot of, it's open-ended. So it's very hard to enforce an ordinance that does not have a definite answer for us to act upon. So I think if we, for example, a lot of, um, talking about finding them five hundred dollars for every incident, da-da-da. But if you really look at the code, um, it doesn't define what is considered to be excessive use.
Right.
I don't have that in paper, again, I'm not a politician, I'm gonna go into, hopefully in council, and I'll learn a lot more things.
Sure.
But I think for our city council to work well, is to be a code that we can rely on.
So you think that, um, you'd work to try to put more, define that ordinance a little bit further? Maybe strengthen that ordinance to give the city a little bit more power?
More power, and that way, we can relieve ourselves from any held liabilities that the city always has concerns for.
Right.
So, you know, times have changed, so I think with time and changes, I also think our ordinances should change as well.
Got it. So, you know, we talked about a little bit on Thirty-Sixth Street, and obviously, there's been, uh-
And that would apply everywhere, not only Thirty-Sixth Street, anywhere, um, in Miami Springs. We have Medley right across the street, we have Hialeah right across the, uh, the canal from us. So, I mean, this would be applicable to any excessive properties, um, calling in for, for police.
For police service, got it. Um, what else, aside from, from public safety, some of the big items that you think are, are top priorities for you, uh, if you were to join the City Council?
Yes, um, my second one, I would say, I was talking about, um, the homeless issue as well. I was walking down the east side of Miami Springs, and a lot of residences are like, we're going outside, we're watering our lawn, sometimes at night, and we just have random people coming in here. My children are outside playing, or what is it we can do? And it's a tough topic, because the homeless do have places to go.
Right.
But sometimes the homeless are not adam, they're not, um, they're not willing to go. So you, there's only so much you can do. However, I would like to sit down with my group, uh, my, my, my council group and the manager, and ask them what we can do if we can meet with Miami-Dade County, so that we can come to a better solution with this homeless problem.
Yeah.
So that we can feel less of the nuisance, because it's just, based on what I'm hearing and understanding, it's just been thrown onto our city.
Yeah.
And I, I just don't think that's fair. I think that anything that's going to make big impact into our city should be negotiated. And I think us as council, we should be negotiators and the voice of the city. And I understand that sometimes it could be a little controversial to get into hot topics.
Right.
But that's the point of our council.
Yeah.
And it's not to point fingers at anybody, it's to work together as a group and with our, our, our manager, um, to see what's the best, most balanced and better solution for Miami Springs.
Sure, and I think, at, at the end of the day, most residents are, are sensitive and, and, and are willing to, to, to help out the homeless. But no one wants, you know, homeless going through their alley, or, you know, whether it's homeless, or criminals, or transients, um, coming through their alleys, or, you know, I've had folks send me videos, because look at this guy, just walked through his house, cut through his house, cut through the backyard, and, and you get trespassers through his home, you know, and-
At the end of the day, I want the, the residents of Miami Springs to feel that their council is working for them. And I think, you know, that's the least that we can do. It's not always gonna be perfect, I don't expect that the whole pu, the public, um, thinks that we can just eliminate all issues as far as, you know, there's always gonna be some crime, but I'm, I'm, our goal is to reduce the amount of crime if we can. And there's always solutions to problems, we just have to look into them.
Right.
Um, I would, you know, make a list of priorities, we definitely need some sort of plan.
Right.
So we can just start knocking them out, but we have to start somewhere. And, um, I mean, as I, like I tell you, as I walk around and do my, my work and hearing all the residences, I'm, I'm overwhelmed.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not gonna be easy, but I'm not gonna promise you the world, but I will promise you that I would like to work on my council, get a list, top five priorities, and work on them. Because we owe it to, to the residents, and I'm a resident, you're a resident. And I'm just doing this out of, out of the goodwill of my heart, and I just feel that we need to, to start scratching off a to-do list.
Yeah. Jackie, you know, as you, as you go through, and I've, I've heard, you know, people comment, and I've, I've, you know, people communicate, reach out to me all the time. I want to hear, you know, some of the concerns that you're, you've been hearing. So we talked about crime, we talked about the homeless, what other issues are you hearing from, from residents as you go door to door? That they're saying, hey, you know, this is a, a, you know, a big issue for me?
Okay, so a third issue, I would talk about, um, is infrastructure changes to the city. Um, I understand that we have a lot of upset people. Sorry, not people, residences
Right.
with the project off of the circle.
The downtown development?
The first building out to Hialeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The old theater.
We're gonna pause for a second, folks, we got, it looks like it's rush hour traffic here at the airport, and, and the plane looks like it's, uh, pretty, pretty big and pretty heavy taking off, so we're gonna just improve the audio. I think you guys can still hear us with the mics, but we can't hear each other. Alright, I think it's taking off. So you said, uh, you're, as you've gone door to door, folks are, are expressing issues with the downtown development, what are you hearing?
Right, what I'm hearing is, um, they were not happy about the variance that passed through. Um, apparently, that, that zoning and that density was for a thirty-five unit, uh, building, and they've extended that over a hundred percent of its, um, capacity. So in that sense, I think, um, I think with big infrastructure changes like that, I think the, it should be up to vote with the residences. I'm not saying that everything should be passed by and voted through residences, because that can be hard, let's be realistic.
Right.
But I think when it has high impact to a city like that, which has a domino effect on traffic, whether it be cars, whether it be more movement of people.
Right.
I think we need to, uh, look at that a little bit better before you start passing over avariances that will literally tip you over.
Right.
And, um, it could become sloppy. So that's one of the issues that, that came up. I would like to have maybe, um, leverage some technology on a survey system. I, again, I have to talk with legal, I have to see how we can implement more of this, uh, survey system.
Right.
When it comes to big deals like that, because I really want the residences to be involved. In that way that we have something clear in writing, um, saying, you know, sixty-six, seventy percent of the residents voted in favor of, and it just makes it a little bit more fair. Um, so as far as creating a little bit more transparency, that, that is my idea with that. And we, you know, Miami Springs is considered, um, we don't use the demographic term anymore, but we're considered a town. And we want to keep it that way. We don't mind maybe, one of my things is to maybe, um, give Westward an uplift.
Sure.
And I think, for the most part, everybody agreed with that, because we're not doing infrastructure changes. Just give it a little uplift, where we have business owners that maybe, it entice business people to come and, and invest into our city. Because right now, pretty much a lot of those units are empty, and it's kind of sad.
I've got a, a comment coming in, it's falling up on, on, on the downtown project, is lack of parking for large projects.
Okay.
Uh, and emphasizing, hey, we need to make sure that these projects have, have parking.
So right now, right now, what we have in parking, I, I mean, obviously, parking is an issue, but it's not an issue right now, because a lot of those units are empty.
Right, right.
So let's say that everything was actually active and functioning, and all those units and those businesses were fired up, definitely parking is an issue. Um, I would like to talk with, uh, my group of council members to see, and my city manager, to see how we can go ahead and implement a parking area. I have one place in mind, I know that, um, I think I might be shooting high, but these are ideas I have.
Sure.
And we have to come up with ideas to make, you know, come to better solutions, you don't know. But the, the parking spot that the police use right now,
Right.
and with, also combined with the other commercial units that are, you know, the businesses there, we park there. It's right in front of Miami Springs Elementary.
Right, right.
So that's a great parking space to, I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah.
I'm giving you an idea of maybe a two-story parking lot, where the first level can be catered to our police.
Sure.
Okay, and the second level can be catered to business owners and their guests.
So, a, a parking garage, right, like behind my Little Greek Deli?
But we want to reframe from the Doral concrete look. So there's many ways to incorporate some sort of structure that does not take away the, the small-town feel. So whether it be covering it with some foliage, I don't know, I'm not a designer, but definitely something that complements our downtown area and fits well. You have the police department, you have Westward, behind the parking lot, you would have, um, you have Miami Springs Elementary.
Yeah.
You have Mylan, so that parking lot's already surrounded by businesses, for the most part. And then I think you have like a multi-story building right behind, but it's not gonna affect anybody's privacy.
Right.
And I, I respect that a hundred percent. Um, can that happen? I don't know, but if we want to give our Westward a facelift and, and entice businesses that we want to see here, a lot of people are like, well, I want a Jimmy John's, I want a Cold Stone, I want, and there are families like me, where sometimes I don't want to cook during the week.
Yeah.
And I, I want to grab, uh, uh, something to eat, and I could only do, you know, ceviches, I love ceviches, I'm a supporter.
Yeah.
I'm a supporter of siamos, but you could only eat that so much. And I, I order ceviches every day. But we want maybe, someone said a chicken kitchen, or a food by the pound. So these are things that I think that our residents are maybe yearning for, and some other ideas. I mean, I want, I want my residents to, you know, drop a, a feed on my, on my website, and tell me what they would like to see. And I can bring it to council, because at the end of the day, it's what we, we need as a community. Just like maybe more family-friendly pick-up-and-go, I, I don't know. It's just ideas I want to throw out there, and I'm hoping that I can get, um, some guidance to my residents.
So, you know, we talked about family-friendly, and, um, we'll go back, you've got a nine-year-old and a twelve-year-old, and, and I, myself, I have three kids, and some younger and some, some older. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna ask you, have you heard this as going through, because I, I hear this all the time, in terms of, uh, traffic and speeding through, through the neighborhood? I'll, I'll let you take it from there.
Well, I already almost had an incident, um, walking through these many, many houses.
Yeah.
I think that, like I said earlier on in the interview, growing up, the police were staple here in my community.
Right.
And they had a presence. But they gained that presence with the amount of years of consistency that they put into it. I love my police officers, and we have great police officers. I'm not gonna sit here and say we don't have great police officers.
Right.
What we can do to establish that again, I would love to talk with chief to see what he says.
Right.
I don't know how their strategies are, and, and how it's working for them. I'm not gonna step in, uh, put my foot into, to a profession I know nothing about. I need to learn, okay, before I talk. So I would like to see how we can get back to that presence. And I think if we get to that point again with time uniformly, I think the speeding would reduce. Because back then, I mean, I have a confession, my two tickets were here in Miami Springs, growing up. And I learned.
Yeah.
And I had friends that didn't want to come and visit me, their parents like, no, 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 I'm not going over there, there's a policia, da-da-da. I go, oh gosh, then I'll go to South Miami, you know? But we had a presence, and we felt safe, and, um-
Yeah, are, are the friends growing up here, and I, I'm gonna echo what you said, growing up here, for sure, the, the folks, you know, friends were like afraid to come into the neighborhood, because, no, no, the cops are there, they'll pull you over if you just do thirty-five.
And they were good guys, these folks were great, but they held up to their service.
Right.
And, um, I think that can be, I think that can be established.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I'm, I'm gonna speak here for, for, for the cops, I, I, you know, the cops that I, that I see too, and I think you, you feel the same way. Uh, we've got a great force out there. I, I, it is my belief, they're pulled out to Thirty-Sixth Street way too much, and they're, um, you know, there's some folks who say, we need more, more police and more budget for, for the folk, for the police officers.
I don't know if we need more police, or we need, uh, together with a clear ordinance, we need to realize some responsibility on the owners.
Yep.
Because they have a due diligence to take care of their guests as well. So if they're putting their guests at, uh, at constant threats, then I think that's a problem altogether. And they shouldn't be relying on our police, as it says here.
Yeah.
Um, to, you know, we're not here for their business management. We're here to serve the public, and I think that they need to incorporate, we need to talk to business owners. I don't, again, I don't know how this works, but the logical, uh, idea for me would be to meet with these business owners and see what they're doing to, to maintain their own business management and the safety for their own guests.
Right.
You know?
Excellent. So, um-
Hire a Wachin Hut.
Yeah, well, you know, and that's, uh, other cities, you know, kind of push, push, push on that, and, and, and put more demands on a business when, you know, there are too many calls for the police.
Right, the police are supposed to go out on an occasional incident, not consistent incident, incident. If you have consistent incidents, then you have a problem.
Yes. So I've got a couple of comments here, and, and we may have addressed this, but let me go to Eileen.
Is that Eileen Vega?
Yes, it's Eileen Vega, she says-
Did they put a sign on your house?
She says, "We feared the police back then, not a bad fear, a respectful fear. But they were super visible and, and, and on you for any," I gotta expand this, because it was, "any speed in propriety." Uh, okay, so she's commenting on that, no question, she goes, yes, uh, they were always in that area, uh, can county, city, other force help us as well? Can we get reinforcements from Miami-Dade County? I think you were alluding to that early on.
Right.
Using Miami-Dade County as a resource.
A couple moons ago, where, uh, VG, Medley, and Miami Springs would, uh, co-collaborate with issues. And I don't think they have that, um, like, not co-collaborate, like, um, we have an issue coming from Medley, going to Miami Springs, or something like that.
Right.
I definitely want to look into, um, policing initiatives, and what we can do as residents. You know, I know that they had this crime watch going on, um, I know that they always say to be village vigilant and stuff like that, but at the end of the day, um, the threat's not gonna be scared of, of a resident, the, the threat is gonna be scared of a person dressed in blue.
Right.
So, um, I definitely want to look into options to see how we can, um, organize some sort of, um, more policing initiatives.
Now, um, we had spoken off-camera about a, a possible-
Like a proactive reliance?
Yeah. Pro, proactive enforcement. Well, we also talked about, um, potential, a, you know, we have different boards, like the Parks and Rec and, and Architectural Review, and, and, and I'm gonna pause here for a second, let the planes take off here behind us. But we also talked, possibly, a, um, crime task force, you know, to have not just the council, but also a, a group of residents who join a board specifically dedicated to crime. What are your thoughts on, on that?
Um, I think I would support my thesis about looking into initiatives, and I think if they feel very passionate about that, I think they should bring it to council.
Awesome. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna, gonna wrap it up here, we, I think we covered most of the issues. Any other top items that you want to address that we haven't brought up in this conversation?
Um, I really don't have anything else, just, I want to salute, um, all the council, um, candidates that are running. Um, because it does take a lot of time out of your life to give public service, and I'm, I'm now learning that, uh, from the actual perspective. So, whatever council members end up in those chairs, I support each and every one of them.
Right.
And, um, I think I will, I used to shy away from going to council meetings all the time, I felt a little bit of a, I'm being real now, because I don't like to sugarcoat. I felt personally a little bit distant from the city, I felt like, you know, I would go there and my voices weren't concerned. And then I think to myself, well, did I voice enough, did, did I go to enough meetings? I'll be honest with you, I didn't go to any and all meetings, okay? Now more so on YouTube, I mean, I've subscribed to the city channel, please subscribe. Um, it would be good if, if, you know, I know everybody's tied up, we have families, we have work, we can't go to every council meeting, we're living in a different era. So please subscribe to the City of Miami Springs YouTube, um, so you can, um, be in tune with each council meeting. And if you can't make it live, it is, um, it's posted after, so you can always go back and just keep abreast. And that's gonna help us as council members as well, um, hear your voices and concerns of, you know, whatever A, B, and C reason. Um, so I think, I think that's it, I just, um, it's a new, new thing for me, but I'm willing to give it a shot and give my efforts. When I start something, anybody who knows me, when I start, I finish. So, it's either a hundred and ten, or I don't do it, because when I commit, commitment for me is a very big word. Um, so, we'll see what happens.
Jackie, we really appreciate, now, folks who want to learn more about you, where should they go to?
Well, I have my website, www.jackiebravoformiamisprings.com. Um, also, you can follow me on social media, uh, through Instagram and Facebook. I don't have those usernames, it's kind of long, but if you go to my website towards the bottom, you can click on the social link, and it'll send you right to my page, and you can follow, comment.
They can email you there and all that, right?
You can email me there, you can call me.
So it's jackiebravoformiamisprings.com?
If you want to meet me personally, let me know, we'll arrange it. I just, I've met maybe five residences just, just last week.
Right.
I met one yesterday, and, um, I'm available.
Excellent.
And, um, you know, I think if you always keep in mind that you are servicing the public, and you don't lose your integrity in the process, you could do good things.
At the end of the day, these are all neighbors, Miami Springs is so small, it's, it's, it's all neighbors. Um, I would like to give the, the candidates, uh, uh, one, uh, final question, and it's, why should they vote for you?
Um, the question is, um, they should, I guess, not that the question is, I think, you know, if my platform sits well with you.
Right.
And, uh, you have some of the same wants that I have for our city of Miami Springs, then vote for me. But, again, if they have to agree with my pa, or, or it has to sit well with them.
Yeah.
So I'm not asking you to, I, I want you to make an informed and, and, and good decision that sits well with you.
And again, they can reach out to you, learn, learn more, uh, from Jackie at jackiebravoformiamisprings.com, we can reach out to you personally, if they have any questions?
And the question is, here I go, the question is, why shouldn't you vote for me? And the question is, here I go, the question is, why shouldn't you vote for me? Because I would like for you to email me.
Uh-huh.
So, I can either improve on that, or maybe, um, understand that reasoning of why, cause I, I, I always like to learn. So, I wanna know their perspective, even though.
Excellent. Alright, guys, so you know how to reach Jackie, and, and we'll be posting this to YouTube as well as on Miami Springs dot com. So, if you have, uh, any other further questions, you can reach out to Jackie herself. Jackie, we wanna thank you again for, for agreeing to participate. Um, this is a beautiful, thank you for, for selecting this location, which was fantastic.
Favorite spot.
This is a beautiful. Beautiful and very special location, so really appreciate it, and, uh, thanks to everybody who's been on board and the questions that came through, Eileen. Uh, Randy and everybody else who, who are commenting here and watching with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Everybody stay safe out there. Thanks again.